Man, whoever, whoever changes names for people that come in is really fast because I can never change my name. And then I start typing something silly and then someone needs to punch it.
I gotcha. I think it's either Scott or Claudia.
You know, Council President Drabkin, I think you do here the intro music duties as part of your, as part of the, uh, the way you can curate the mood on this current council.
I think a lack of music curates the perfect mood.
Ah, I see. Just a little time with the old noodle.
Hey, uh, the Zoom link on the website I think is broken.
Okay, uh, I, I was able to get in through it.
I'm able to get in through the link that we got over email, but when I tried to link on the website, I was, it keeps, the site can't reach, can't be reached. So we may have a very thin audience this evening.
Sal, did you use the link that is embedded in the agenda packet or a different one?
The agenda packet link works fine, but the link that is literally in the text on the city council meeting page, if you click that, uh, at least if I click that on my browser, it does not, it says site can't be reached.
Okay.
How many, how many links you have to start clicking, dude?
Uh, well, I clicked the one on the webpage and it didn't work. And then I went to the packet, clicked that one and it did work.
There you go.
We'll, we'll have, we'll have Scott and Claudia take a look at that.
Yeah, it's just the, it's just in the text on the HTML page, on the main page.
Yeah, it usually works.
Yeah.
Okay, it is, uh, 7:02 and I will call to order the city council meeting, January 26th, 2021. I'll call on Claudia to do a roll call. Claudia?
Councilor Garbin.
Share a screen. Okay, oh, they're there.
Here.
Councilor Giri.
Present and accounted for. Thank you very much.
Councilor Minky.
Here.
Councilor Tenewith.
Host is stopped your radio. I don't know why.
Here.
Councilor Peralta.
Here.
Council President Drabkin.
Here.
And Mayor Hill.
Here. Uh, could I have everyone mute their lines? We, we've got some feedback. So I'll assume if you would mute, Sheila Barnes, if you could mute, we're picking up some noise from your line. Thank you. Okay. Tonight, uh, comments from citizens. Any interested audience member is invited to provide comments. Uh, and any comments that require some type of follow-up will be assigned to an appropriate staff member. So anyone may speak on topics other than a matter that is in litigation, quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Our comments are limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you wish to speak, uh, please raise your hand in the Zoom function. Um, and, uh, we will then ask you to un, we will unmute your phone and then give you the three minutes to, uh, address the council. Claudia, are you aware of any individuals that would like to address the council this evening?
Mayor None have pre-signed and I don't see anyone raising their hand via Zoom.
Thank you, Claudia. And that's going to take us to our first item this evening, which is a presentation on the EC, ESCI Fire Department Consolidation Implementation Strategic Planning Session. Uh, the chief has sent out to council the slides that we'll be using tonight in an email. Uh, so chief, I'll call on you to introduce, introduce the, the topic of discussion tonight. I see that Sheldon's on the line. I welcome Sheldon. It's good to see you again, sir. So we'll turn it over to you, chief.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and, and councilors, this evening Sheldon Gilbert, uh, the CEO of, um, our consultant company ESCI is online to conduct a, um, short presentation and then a, um, a SWOT analysis with the city council. This is part of the strategic and implementation planning phase, uh, of the, um, the post feasibility study that was conducted by ESCI. Um, it is the next step, uh, in your decision to, uh, make the determination to move forward with partnering with our neighboring agencies and creating a district. Uh, and with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Gilbert and, um, and let him run with the show. I don't want to eat too much of his time up.
Thank you, chief and Honorable Mayor, Council. Honored to be here tonight, back with you. To move on to the next, uh, the next stage of this process. So I guess the first, whoopsie daisy, I said the wrong one. Standby. I hit Dropbox instead of the presentation. Standby. Okay, so I'm hoping that you will be able to see my presentation. I know you have a copy of it, but, um, Mr. Mayor, if you can see my screen and give me.
It is up, Sheldon.
Okay, superb. I will move forward. So, um, I had the honor of being with you several weeks back and running you through the, the, the report, uh, as well as the addendum on the feasibility of the formation of two fire districts and ultimately potentially one fire district for your whole region there in the Willamette Valley area that you are in. And, um, we were able to go ahead and kind of lay out a, a roadmap, if you will, uh, on a long range plan and what those options might be with a number of phases. Um, and we had a brief discussion, uh, myself and, and your council, uh, as well as with the fire chief and with other districts on what are the next steps. And so, um, these, these are, these are the next steps. What we kind of, uh, came to the conclusion would be a good way to go is for us to do some stakeholder input and basically a, a SWOT analysis, if you will, on exactly, um, how you feel and how you view the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities and the threats or challenges of this, of this report and, and this, um, um, this proposal. Uh, I, I will be having the same process with every district and/or municipality that it was involved in the study. As you can see, there are nine of them. I should say everyone in the north, but not in the south. So I'll, I'll be meeting with the ones up in the north, um, that are potential participants in the Northern Willamette Valley Fire Protection District. As I stated previously, there is no magic to that name. That's just what your consultant used. It may not end up being that, but, uh, for the sake of, uh, descriptive clarity, that's, that's what I used. Um, when we did this study, as you recall, we really were asking three questions. Where are you now? Um, where do you need to be or where can you potentially be that would provide some economies of scale, enhanced capabilities, better outcomes, better bench strength, all the different things we talked about last time? And how do you get there? And, and we, we gave you a roadmap that to the best of our ability and my ability seemed to make some sense, given all of the, uh, all of the different options that you had in, in front of you. Um, we did, as you recall, the baseline evaluation of all nine jurisdictions and looked at all the different elements of each agency, uh, everything from fire prevention to service delivery to finances to training and everything in between. And, uh, then we, we conducted out of that what we thought some collaborative opportunities were, what were the administrative, operational, financial, political and administrative realities of those, of those options? And we tried to lay them out in an order that we felt made sense and had some opportunity for success. And we put those forward as recommendations and an implementation strategy. The study purpose was to assess the fiscal structure and the infrastructure of each of the agencies and do a side-by-side comparison, uh, and identify those options that I just talked about that are alternatives that are available and that we feel are sustainable and achievable by y'all. And then analyze the most feasible of those options and alternatives and recommend them in the right order, which we have attempted to do. So the million dollar question that drove this whole thing from the beginning, when you, you, uh, went ahead and commissioned the study and kudos to you for doing that. This is not the easy thing to do, but this is sometimes the, the best thing to do, but it involves a lot of work. But it has to be based on the premise that what is in the best interest of the communities that you all serve. And I believe that this was done in that spirit and all the agencies have participated. I think we're very mindful of that and, and they, they held true to this. So our recommendations, as we did them, were, uh, were four phases. So the first phase, uh, as you know, there are a number of different initiatives and contractual, uh, 190 type agreements under Oregon statute that allow you to work together on a, a number of different fronts. Many of you are in the same dispatch center. Many of you use the same medical director. Many of you share training. Some of you contract for services such as McMinnville World, who I talked to the other night. You provide service for them exclusively. So there's a lot of individual agreements that are taking place, but not everybody's doing everything together. And so the phase one of this report was to encourage all of the agencies. If you have any inclination to move forward with any phase of this in the future, get as many of those things together as you can and do it the same and do it together. Cause it just, uh, eliminates artificial and unnecessary barriers to a more streamlined regional approach. In phase two, which is what we're here to talk about tonight, uh, we recommended that you establish the North Willamette Valley and the Mid Willamette Valley Fire Protection Districts. Uh, the Mid Willamette agencies, the three of them are, uh, in fact, um, moving forward in some fashion. I think two of the three are, um, and they, they have been working on this even before the study. Uh, up in the north, which consists of Amity, Dundee, Dayton, Lafayette, New Carlton. Uh, you are really doing a serious exploration of this, uh, probably for the first time at this level. And so, uh, this process is going to be very insightful and informative for all of the participating agencies to kind of get you on the same page. Phase three was for those two districts to contract with one another to be like one agency and see how that works throughout the whole valley there, the mid and the north. And then phase four is if that all works out, you could form one district, combining the two north and mid Willamette Valley Fire Districts into one Willamette Valley Fire Protection District. So that's, that was the phase and the ordering of the phase. Um, so we're going to dismiss the, the mid Willamette Valley for now because they're doing their own thing and I'm helping them in some different ways. But we want to talk about the North Willamette Valley and Amity, Dundee, Dayton, Lafayette, New Carlton and yourself. And so what we wanted to do is we thought that the best way to move forward was for me to meet with each of those bodies individually and have a little SWOT session, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, and kind of understand where everybody's at, where everybody's in support, where everybody's got some worries and where there might be some deal breakers. When I get done with this process with everybody, we will then be taking this information and correlating it and looking for trends and trying to identify some specific elements that, uh, that are, need to be addressed by each of the agencies. And then we'll move into what we're going to call a one and a half to two day implementation planning session. And the concept there is that we will have representative from each elected body, presumably the president or the mayor, whoever you determine should attend, along with the fire chief from that jurisdiction. And then probably some, some city and administrative leaders like your city manager and others who have a vested interest and really have crucial information to add to this process. And over that day and a half, we're going to work through these issues and optimize on these strengths and come together with what we're going to call a strategic implementation plan that will have the major initiatives and the goals and the objectives and the committees and the responsible parties and the, and the tentative due dates. So that when you get out of that session, I'll turn around to you and relatively quick form your implementation plan and you'll know specifically who's going to move forward and who's, who's not. And then once we have that, in addition to moving that plan forward, um, we have, uh, proposed to conduct what's called a standards of cover study. And once we know who's participating, that will be the operational study that will look at the, the geography and the risk profile and the stations and the equipment and the personnel and the performance and the outcomes. And how can that be optimized as you pull this new legal entity together and bring it together? And then on top of that, we will also be doing some very detailed, uh, cost allocation, uh, modeling and methodology once we know who's in and who's not, uh, so that you can have hopefully a starting point budget for this new district that will work as at least a framework for your first budget when you get this thing moved forward. So that's, that's kind of the process that we talked about with the chief and with the city manager and with, uh, some of the other parties that were interested in this. Um, and I've done this session one time with the rural district, uh, and you are my second session. So with that, I'll stop at this point to see if you or the chief or the city manager or anyone would like to make comments on what I just said or, uh, unconfuse you if I confused you or if you need clarification, I will do my best. And then we'll move into the actual, uh, SWOT analysis.
So let's go ahead and open it for those on the council, uh, any questions for Sheldon before he goes into the SWOT analysis.
Okay, you can go ahead and take it.
I'll call one more time for any questions. Hearing none. Sheldon, go ahead and let's go through the SWOT analysis.
Hey, alright, so, um, my trustee assistant who happens to be my wife tonight, uh, has the screen and she is going to be typing in as you give us these elements so that we can kind of talk about them and make sure that we've properly understood them and, and have them, um, correctly articulated. So, so the first thing I wanted to ask you is you've, you've had the overview of the report. You've had lots of conversations and lots of different forums about this concept. You've now seen the report, you received the report, we presented on the report, we answered all the questions. What are the strengths of this whole concept of forming this North Willamette Valley Fire Protection District? What, what is good about that that makes you think this is maybe a good idea or certainly was idea worth pursuing until at such time you hit, hit something that you didn't see? So let's talk about the strengths of this concept.
Okay, we'll go ahead and Sheldon, you will just call on councilors to share strengths?
Yes, sir. And I'll let you call them or they can just jump in, whatever is your preference.
Well, I'll start out and I think there's some economies of scale whenever we can bring jurisdictions together and we don't have to have, uh, a top loaded administrative at each of the districts. We can cut out administration and we're not so large that we could put together one administrative, uh, piece that would be able to give us economies of scale. Uh, from my perspective, we're seeing Amity already working with us. We've given some assistance to Dundee and those, those relationships seem to be doing well and we're able to accomplish what we need to do.
So you're, you're seeing good relationships and you're seeing good, uh, economies of scale and, and synergistic benefit from working together. Is that, is, is that what I heard?
That would be a good summary, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Others?
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would just add that, um, this seems like a working solution for some of the, uh, um, barriers we've heard coming from the chief and from the fire department in regards to, um, staffing and wanting to support our fire teams.
Yeah, and, uh, councilman, I just want to confirm that that has to do with, uh, concerns over being able to staff adequately and, uh, to, to keep up and catch up with your growth and your changing risk profile. Is that, is that what you're speaking to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got it.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, Zach.
I think a, a, a potential strength I see, um, well, I was going to use the word opportunity in my answer. So maybe it is an opportunity. So I think I'll hold.
And they're closely related and they can be.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe Sheldon, for, just for the sake of pushing the discussion forward, you could, you could put this where you see it best, but I think the, um, the opportunity to sort of reshuffle the deck for where and how we distribute resources so that it's, you know, we look at a beyond city borders and, and look at a larger area, all of which needs fire and EMS services provided to them. And instead of having this really silent approach that we, you know, are driving a long way from the downtown McMinnville location, we're able to sort of reshuffle the deck and accurately look at a larger place, where can we best serve those? Um, I'm, I'm excited about, about that. I think that's going to offer a lot to the district.
Yeah. So a, so a seamless regional, uh, system, um, for, for all risk emergencies. So a seamless, what do we put in seamless, uh, response system?
I couldn't have said it better myself and I didn't.
Uh, that's okay. That's all right. I just, I just want to count it correctly, making sure so.
Yes, that accurately.
By the way, when, when we do bring all these together and I correlate, correlate all these and we aggregate them, uh, we're going to put the themes together and those themes are going to be presented to your actual planning team with the representatives from all the jurisdictions. So that's, this is what's going to drive those discussions if we move forward in that next two day session.
I, I also think a strength for, um, those actually out there on the front line will be just sort of a boost. I think it'll just be a feel like a, a fresh start, a new way to provide service to everyone in the area. And they'll feel like that those, the regions that were supporting them, put that, and the people they're in that they're serving, put the trust and faith in the formation of the district. And I feel like those people out there on the front line will respond in kind by sort of being a renewed vigor in the district and their jobs.
Yep. So increased morale amongst the troops and kind of a fresh, a, a fresh start and a fresh approach.
Yeah.
You, uh, to, to fire protection. Yep. Yep. There, there can be a lot of energy, positive energy behind this if it's done correctly. And I believe you guys are doing it correctly. So that's good.
Uh, Chris, I think, I see, Chris, you've unmuted yourself.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think, um, it also offers a, an opportunity to reset the permanent tax base.
Yeah, man, good one. Opportunity to reset the, uh, the tax base and tax rate.
Uh, Adam, go ahead.
Uh, it allows the opportunity for operational unity as far as safety and training programs and operational SOPs. Uh, most fire scenes are mutual aid regardless of the jurisdiction that it's initially responding out of. And so I think, uh, firefighting will be more efficient with, uh, with a unified training and, and SOP instead of kind of being little silos like everybody is right now. Even you have national standards, but you still have certain ways of doing things within certain departments and organizations right now.
Yep, yep. All extremely valid points. Wonderful.
Uh, could I say something?
Go ahead, Kelly.
On a similar vein, just, I, I think it provides the fire department at least more flexibility and it, because they don't have to deal with all the other departments and the budgeting issues. They can focus on what they're doing and, uh, you know, what their real needs are and how they're going to go about them more efficiently perhaps.
Yeah, you do, you have a single purpose governing body with, uh, all they do is fire and EMS. So, so yeah, that's, uh, that's good for running, running fire protection and EMS services. Good one. Anything else on the strengths? Okay, you don't have to make stuff up. Once you're there, you're there. So we'll just, we'll just keep going. All right, let's, let's talk about the, the weaknesses. What are, what's the soft underbelly of this concept from, from your, the city's perspective and your, your perspective? What, uh, what kind of things do we need to be aware of that are, are potential that, um, might, might be a weakness?
Um, one weakness that I see is that I, I feel that it is going to take a little bit longer than I would prefer to meet our, uh, city's, uh, staffing issue. Uh, and I question whether, um, some of the broader, um, public safety issues, like for example, if we were wanting to make changes to police staffing could be fit into a framework of redistricting the way that it's currently being envisioned.
Well, I, I, I get, uh, we'll take more time to meet the city staffing issues than you'd like. Totally got it. So I want to make sure the other weakness is that this may not, would the weakness be that this wouldn't translate over to the law enforcement?
I just, well, my concern is how is the, you know, I feel like we have some needs with respect to law enforcement and transitioning, um, you know, to just kind of meet some current demands that the public's making. And I just worry that going down this path might inhibit our ability to address that.
Okay. Okay, so that inhibited your ability to address some law enforcement issues?
Yeah.
Yep.
Can, can you unwrap that for me a little bit, Mr.?
Well, it just seems like we're committing to a certain kind of plan for, um, for this funding and, you know, going up for this particular funding. And, and I feel like we have other public safety funding issues that, you know, could be wrapped into fire safety and, and going forward that way. And so I'm just concerned about how this is going to fit in with those other priorities.
Got, got it.
Just to clarify, Sal, you're more like, instead of us going out for a public safety levy, we're basically isolating law enforcement and isolating fire into their own funding strategies?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's fair, Adam, or, you know, I think that's fair.
Yeah. You're definitely siloing the ser, services that serve your constituents from a, from a financial standpoint.
I think another weakness is that regardless of any jurisdiction, uh, when you go into a larger district, you're losing the intimacy for your, uh, exact constituents that you're elected to. So, you know, that district's going to serve the whole district and not just McMinnville. And they're going to look at the vision as the whole district and not just McMinnville. So, um, making sure that we maintain service levels and what our vision is as we move into a district that our citizens are well represented.
And I might, I might add on to what Adam said is we lose control in reality other than having one seat at the board with the other jurisdictions. So right now where we have complete control as a city and our citizens can come to the city, it, uh, it pushes it off to a regional body that is not your city council, but it is a fire district.
Yep. Those are great nuances. Yep, those are important. And, and, and those are going to be very important when we start talking about putting a governance committee together to talk about the board and the board membership and whether there'll be advisory, you know, boards and, and all, all sorts of things. Because, um, this is the biggest thing to, to deal with when you do a regional model is loss of local control and identity. So those are, those are good, good ones to have on there.
Other weaknesses?
I think it might be difficult to come at the tax rate. I mean, maybe that's a little too specific for what we're discussing here, but as I read through your, uh, your, uh, product, your written product, I was, uh, puzzled because a great deal of discussion has gone into, at least from the McMinnville point of view, a, a 2% millage versus a 1.5 whatever millage. And I was just a little puzzled by that.
Yeah, so, um, that's great. And, and, and that's exactly what needs to be talked about. But yeah, we, we deducted that a minimal, not necessarily sustainable long-term mill rate to start this would be in the 1.5 area. However, if you went to the 1.98 near the two, you could do the growth and the enhancements and, and, uh, the, the coverage and the different things that you wanted to accomplish over the next five to six to 10 years. So it's really a matter of whether you want to start out capped out with nowhere to go because you can't usually go back. Or do you want to start out with, with some room?
You want to start out better and, and not have to go out and ask for money in the first 10 years.
Exactly, exactly. And so that's, that's the, that's the governing discussion. And that was the difference between the 1.5, whatever it was, and the, the 1.9, whatever it was. So, um, but yeah, that's, that's good. That needs to be on there. So, um, just put, uh, um, minimum versus, minimum versus maximum tax potential, tax rate potential. I'm glad you read the report. Thank you. That's awesome.
Oh, it's a good report.
Other comments under weaknesses?
Okay, excellent. Well, then we'll go on, Mr. Mayor. We'll talk about opportunities and sometimes opportunities and, and, uh, strengths crossover and that's fine. But sometimes there's specific opportunities you might have as a part of this regional model that you might not have as your own municipal department. So what do you think some of those opportunities are? And you may have covered some of them. That's okay. We can repeat them. It's not a big deal if you want.
Well, I, I see an opportunity to relate services now for fire protection to, uh, uh, a certain tax base. And you don't have to, you don't have to, uh, detail things out from, you know, police, you know, safety totally. We're talking specifically fire. And so if the community feels a need to have better fire And so if the community feels a need to have better fire protection, uh, then you address one element and that's the levy that's, uh, uh, being used for that product.
Yes. Yeah. There's, there's definitely a nexus between source and expenditure. And uh, there's no, there's no hiding it. What goes in and what goes out is going to be specific for fire protection. So that's good.
Um, I think we have the opportunity for, you know, regional deployable resources. So right now each jurisdiction pretty much all deploys out of one house. And you're waiting for a second or third alarm typically to get mutual aid resources where the larger fire district, I would envision, uh, resources coming from different directions. So you're, you should lower response times to an effective firefighting force. You might not lower response times to initial on scene, but to get to that effective firefighting force, you, I would think is a solid.
Two E R F, effective response force. The word times two E T O E R F. There you go.
Sheldon, a, a question that may be my addition to this. Do you find that, I guess, do you find that fire districts, um, draw more volunteers?
You know, I think anytime you get larger and you have a larger footprint and you have a higher profile, um, it's a little easier to reach out. People aren't confused and, and there does seem to be a little added energy around serving a region versus serving a very small jurisdiction, probably less in the city than some of the small districts. But, but all of a sudden you'll be the, one of the larger games in town and people want to be a part of that. And quite honestly, it's a great entry point for those who want a career in firefighting. And, uh, it does help with your recruitment and retention of volunteers as well as a great entry point. And there's a lot of different directions you could take that to your paid, to your paid positions.
Right. Frankly, may, may, perhaps there's some apprehension in volunteerism for the fire department now if they're being asked to make such a big lift. Uh, that, that perhaps it's, it's a lower barrier to entry for volunteers if we have a more robust, complete fire district that is providing all of that service. And that is one heck of a notification. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, al- also if I, if I might, um, it, not only is it more energy towards volunteer recruitment, but it also might provide us with an opportunity to address the retention needs as our tax base changes has become larger and, and thus become more of a, a place where people may want to be rather than a place where we're being used as a training ground for the larger departments.
Yeah, that's, that's a really, really good point. Because you'll go from, um, you'll go from the feeder to the destination. And, and that, that is a, that is a huge deal when you realize the amount of time and money you spend to prepare a firefighter just to have them go work for TVF9. So this, this will be great.
Uh, would this also provide opportunities as far as, uh, the staff moving up and more, uh, opportunity to, uh, actually even if you wanted to change sites of where you're working and things like that?
Bet. Yep. There'll be more opportunity for, um, different locations, different certifications and levels of services. And there'll be enhanced promotions over time because you're part of a larger group. So you are absolutely right. Promotions. Good. Good stuff. Anything else? Those are all good ones. Okay. So, so the last thing we want to talk about i- is threats. And the difference between a weakness and a threat, at least how I view it when I do these things, is a threat is something if we don't address it over time, it could derail this process or do serious damage to any of the participating communities or personnel. So is there, is there anything? And we call it challenges. That's a watered down nice way of saying it. But I, I almost prefer in this particular case, what are the threats? What, what, what bad could happen if we don't address this correctly?
Um, if we don't address what's going to happen with the already assessed millage rate?
Right.
And make that real clear, it could torpedo public, um, support.
Address existing mill rate. Yeah. So, so just so I know what you're getting out now is there's a certain amount of money being paid now to the city for fire protection and everything else. And now we're going to start this district with a whole new mill rate. Do we, do we supplant? Do we just leave them both alone? But we got, you gotta walk that line and we gotta make that case so that it makes sense and that the community doesn't feel they're being double taxed without more service. Is that, is that what you're at?
Exactly. If, if, if we're all of a sudden coming at them with a $2 millage rate and we're already keep, and we keep the 1.50 whatever we have going, that means now that the, they're, they're looking at 3.50 because they put, agreed to this. And that could end up backfiring if we want to get public support.
Right.
Make this happen.
Uh, just put existing and future mill rates. I'll know what it is. Or tax rates. Existing and future tax rates. Yep. That's a good one. That's a little more nuanced that some people don't think about, but that is a big thing for the cities specifically who are going in, uh, to determine what they're going to do with that existing tax and what they're going to let the district take and what they're going to keep.
And Sheldon, I think I'll go back to something that we talked about under weaknesses, but in reality a threat is if, um, you know, a jurisdiction such as the city loses control of fire protection, but they truly are by charter, uh, are specifically, uh, positioned to provide that. And we lose control and the quality, you know, that could be a threat to, uh, being able to be successful with our charter as a city.
Yep. Absolutely. So you, you have statutory responsibility to provide fire protection for your city. And you're choosing to do that by assigning your authority to the fire district.
You know, we had a discussion probably maybe 10 years ago when we were looking at taking ambulance services and, and, uh, taking that out to the private sector. And the chief was really good at bringing us back to, uh, that we would lose complete control. And, uh, you know, so it, it, it goes, it goes without saying that's the same thing.
Correct. And, and this is where, um, one of the subcommittees you will see us have is obviously the, the legal, the councils. Uh, because when these, these formation papers are drawn up and the descriptions are drawn up, um, there needs to be adequate language to make sure that you're not being held responsible for that which you don't control. So.
Um, and another threat or challenge would be, we're currently the only paid staff, uh, jurisdiction that's coming into this possibility. And so to make sure that we're maintaining or improving service levels, um, would be something I would see as a threat and that we're not watering down the service levels of our citizens in the name of a larger district.
Yep.
And second to that would be keeping, uh, making sure that our line staff and union are in, in support of this and that we're not going against them as we're trying to enter into a district.
Yeah, line and union staff support. Um, yes. And I don't know if you knew this or not, but I did do a presentation just for your labor group. And, um, based on the feedback I got, uh, they are fundamentally supportive of the concept. Of course, they want the details. And that's, and, and, and to your previous point, uh, sir, the current service levels, that's why we do that standards and cover study. So we can define the risk profile within each response area, which very well may be each, you know, legal descriptive area. Uh, and what services it's getting now, what services it's going to get after, and why is that better? Uh, or why is it not reduced at least? And so, um, those, those questions have to be answered in that study, uh, before you guys are expected, or should be answered in that study, before you guys sign on the line. So absolutely.
I think, I think, um, mine's a little bit in the vein of the first one in that it could use the same word torpedo. But, uh, I think, I think there's, it, it's a little bit of a blend, but there's so many moving parts and it's such a nuanced process that we could get seven eighths of the way down the road and just, it falls apart. And we're, we're no farther down the road. Other than I think in your phases, that phase one sort of had some institutional blending without full districting, which I think will lend benefits regardless. But I think, I think a challenge is, is a big nuanced, complex juggle for a long time that's got to pay off.
Right.
Um, in order to see the benefit for all of this time effort and energy. So.
11th hour fatal flaw. And, and, and I'll tell you.
You're able to do it in three words or less. That's.
Yeah. Well, I have to, I have to do everything in bullets. That's how I live. Uh, but, but I, I will tell you that we will, uh, if y'all go down this road and we go down this road together, we will get to the 11th hour and a grenade will be thrown. I don't know what it is. It happens every time. It's never not happened. Um, but, uh, by doing the good work upfront, uh, 9.99% of the time we overcome it without too much, uh, too much carnage. But, but yeah, you're right. You, you gotta, you gotta build this thing on a good foundation or, uh, uh, you can't have an 11th hour disintegration. And that, that, that's not good. Although it is, it is 1% better than going 100% and then trying to divorce in five years. That's worse. So, um, but that's why you do all the work upfront.
Yeah.
As a continuation of what Counsel Gary was saying, uh, um, would be that, uh, a threat could be viewed as just the, the timing on this. So in terms of avoiding, um, an 11th hour fatal flaw, that, uh, that, that we're conscientious of the pace at which we move forward, um, in order to have, uh, broader support as.
Correct. That's a really good one. You, you, um, you don't want to go fast at the expense of, of support and good communication. And, uh, cause that'll, that'll, that'll cause your 11th hour fatal flaw. If you have too many people hanging out there that aren't comfortable, they'll show up in the end. So that's exactly.
Uh, the only other thing I could think of would be the initial size of, you know, right now we're looking at nine, all nine partners coming on or the possibility, just that many jurisdictions, board districting, seems like it could be cumbersome to campaign on and think it, it's for that to pass and then initial districting. If we had at the end of this next phase.
Right. Correct. And so I just want to clarify with you. We, we, we broke it into two districts initially. So this is, you know, you're only going to be with Amity, Dundee, Dayton, well, not only, this is still a lot. Amity, Dayton, Dundee, Lafayette, New Carlton, and then Sheridan Southwest and West Valley are going to do their own thing. And then, yeah, you're right. At some point you'll come together. Um, but you're right. How, how do you share a regional valley wide vision, but do this in bite sized chunks, you know, that are, that are achievable and sustainable? And that's what we tried to lay out in the phases. But as we move along this farther, you may find that a, a smaller bite is necessary. We may not get all, um, six districts for the North A1. I don't know. We're going to find out going through this process. I can tell you that McMinnville Rural, who is completely dependent on you for fire protection now, is obviously interested in, in participating in the process. But, um, uh, Chief Hanafin is getting us scheduled for Dundee, Dayton, Lafayette, New Carlton, I think in, uh, actually I've got one of them next week, but there's three of them. We're going to try to get done in mid February in hopes that late February or early March, we can actually have the, the two day session or day and a half session. So good, good stuff though. You guys are super sharp on this.
Well, one, one other piece that comes to me, and I'm not so sure that a threat is, uh, but a challenge, if I could use the word challenge, you know, we've got to sell this to the public. And that comes at a lot of communication, a lot of hard work. And, uh, you know, uh, when we put together levies, you know, the city can't necessarily be a part of it. So it has to be outside of the city staff. And so that means city councils and those that are proponents to this need to really go out and tell a story. So that is truly, I, I wouldn't say it's a threat, but it is a challenge that we all have to gear up and, and be that communication piece.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Um, selling a regional concept to multiple, um, chartered jurisdictions simultaneously is, is a very complex thing to do. So you are, you are right to, uh, give a significant deference. Good. Good stuff. Anything else on the challenge side? Those are all really good nuanced ones that are good policy elements. We need to make sure we, we address. Super impressed. Okay. Okay. Um, so at this point then, I'm going to go ahead and take the screen back. and get my PowerPoint back open. And so like I said, and I'll just go through this one more time and open it up for any sort of comments y'all might have. We're doing these, these visi-, we're going to do, uh, the visioning session, um, with each jurisdiction independently and, and kind of talk about what you think it could be and what are the, what are the issues. We'll do some more visioning, but we'll, we'll do it in a more regional manner on the joint implementation committee. That's going to be, um, what we, what we believe initially to be, uh, one elected official fire chief and or, uh, city administrator or county administrator, if they have them, from each of the jurisdictions, um, develop this implementation strategic plan over a, a two day period. We're not going to, we're not going to do the plan. We're going to develop the plan. Uh, and then that plan's going to have to be carried out. It'll include due dates and work groups and responsible parties and all those kinds of things. And that'll be the roadmap and that'll be your strategy. And that'll be your, your sheet of music that y'all read off of as you move forward. We'll establish those working groups that will feed back into that strategic planning team. And then we're going to help them understand the need to meet, identify, challenge, refine and overcome in those groups. So they feed back information to that. And then we'll have a very, um, robust tracking system and a very transparent tracking system. So you can see exactly how this implementation plan, strategic implementation plan's coming along. Uh, we'll display it in a number of different ways so that the community can see it as well as these committees, as well as the electeds, whoever needs to see it. Um, and, and a big part of that, Mayor, will be exactly what you said, working through, there'll definitely be a communications group working on talking points, delivery systems, timing and, and, uh, and communication elements. So all that stuff will come together in that two day retreat. And then from there it'll go into a written plan. And then it's a matter of us, you know, uh, initiating the actions and, and seeing what that timeline looks like and, and checking them off as we get them done. So that's, that's kind of where we go for here, along with that standard to cover report. And then we'll also do some refined, deeper modeling, financial modeling to put together a budget once we know who the participating agencies are. So that's, um, that's kind of the, the process that I had for y'all tonight. Um, I'd be happy to take any questions. I don't know if the chief or the city manager or the mayor, if you would, if you'd like to say anything additionally, but I am here for questions and I thank you for your participation. You were insightful. You were considerate. Uh, you were thoughtful. And I think, um, that's going to be, that's going to serve us really well as this process moves forward. I hope all the elected bodies do the same. So thank you.
Thank you, Sheldon. Uh, just a question I have for the chief, because in your memo, chief, you know, under the discussion, you talked about, uh, what we've done tonight, but you've also, uh, asked for, uh, one elected representative serve on the stakeholder focus meetings. When do you anticipate to have that, that you want that name to, from us?
We'll, uh, we're working on coordinating that meeting more than likely first week or two of, of March. Uh, so if we can have it the week beforehand, that would be a, a good time, I think, appropriate. We want to make sure that whoever it is has time to set their schedule appropriately for, uh, what might be a weekend long meeting.
Okay.
So I, I don't, uh, I don't, it, to myself, I don't know how you want to handle that process, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm trying to think of our next meeting. When is our next meeting? If, if you can make a decision by the next council meeting, that would be fine.
Okay. So that would be, uh, second week of February. I think it's the ninth or the 11th?
The ninth. Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That'd be fine, sir.
Okay.
I just want to throw out, Mr. Mayor, I need to take my name out of consideration for serving in that role if, uh, as you're considering who from the council to serve just because of, uh, work commitments at that time.
Okay. Go ahead, Jeff.
Mayor, I, I would suggest if you've, you know, since the information is fresh, um, in your mind and you've done some good work, if you want to have some discussion about, um, about who might represent the city in that effort tonight, there's no reason you have to wait. If you feel comfortable moving forward with some direction tonight, you can give that to us for sure.
Thank you. I, I know we've done a little bit of reaching out. I haven't talked to everyone, but, um, you know, I'll, I'll throw out a name. Um, you know, Adam Garvin has had experience as a volunteer fire, with the volunteer, uh, as a volunteer with the fire department, has great passion, uh, and understanding. And if I'm not mistaken, uh, in our conversations, Adam feels like he might have that, uh, time availability, the know-how, the knowledge and the passion to do that. So I'm just going to turn it over to you, Adam, after tonight's discussion. Anything give you pause to, to say that you would or? Anything give you pause to, to say that you would or would not be interested?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would be interested in filling that role if that's what the council wishes. I do feel I bring in perspective and expertise in some capacity that maybe some other counselors don't, just from that volunteer experience I had. And I feel I do have working relationships with our whole fire department, from admin down to line staff. And, you know, at the end of the day, I'm here to represent the council on that board and, and the citizens. So I'm happy to do that if that's what the council wishes.
Mr. Mayor, I wholeheartedly throw my support behind Counselor Garvin being appointed to that, to that position.
I would support that too. I think Adam would be an excellent choice.
So is that a motion and a second?
Yes, sir. I, I moved to appoint Counselor Garvin to this, to the, the fire committee. I can get my language a little cleaned up if I go back in my notes, but.
Stakeholder focus committee?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
In a second. Okay. Any further discussion from anybody on council of concern? Hearing none, then I will, it's been moved to seconded, all in favor of having Adam Garvin serve on our, on our stakeholder focus committee. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So chief, we've got that squared away. Thank you, Jeff. And so Sheldon, you know who you're going to be working with specifically on that focus group. Okay, now I'll go back and open it up to any closing questions or discussion that needs to be happening from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Counselor Garvin, if you need anything at all, moving forward in your preparation for this position, feel free to yell at me.
Definitely. I'll reach out and have a meeting with you and Jeff in the near future.
Yes.
But Garvin, I think you needed our, both our sons to have a ride on the bucket truck in the bucket down Third Street. Siren as loud as possible.
I don't know that that is a requirement of being on the committee, but just in case. You've covered your bases, Zach.
To lobby him to see if we could get a ride in the bucket truck.
And why wasn't my name thrown out?
And I was going to say, let's not limit this just to sons. I, I know I have at least one daughter that would be very interested in that.
Absolutely. Yeah, there's some of us that had that opportunity to go up in the bucket truck to the height when we bought it. So, and it is not scary. It is very, it's very secure. Okay. Sheldon, any last words from you?
I would just commend you on your taking this whole project on and really being the catalyst behind it. You guys were the ones that initiated it, carried the water on this initial report. And should it be a successful endeavor, and I believe it will, I believe you'll have something to look back on and say you did the right thing for the right reasons. So I just commend you all and thank you for your, your help and look forward to working with you as you move forward.
Thank you for your presentation and your hard work.
My pleasure.
Great. Okay. We're done with our presentation. That takes us to new business. And tonight we have two items under new business. Due to the scribbler air, I will be changing the order of the items on the new business agenda and changing it back to its original agenda order. And we'll start with the item discussion of the letter, the discussion of letter to Governor Brown in support of McMinnville Small Business. And so a part of your packet is from Jeff, a memorandum that talks about a letter that we have received from the McMinnville Chamber of Commerce, asking us to consider reopening fitness centers and restaurants. Attached to that, you'll have letters from the Chamber of Commerce to Governor Brown and Director Allen in support of local businesses, a letter from Joya to the Yamhill County Commissioners, a letter from President, the chamber to the city council, and a sample letter from Redmond City Council to Governor Brown. And so with that being said, we've just been asked to, to be a part of that. And I'd like to open that discussion with the council. I, let me take a look. I don't, I don't see Joya on the line to answer any questions for us. So I'll just go ahead and, go ahead, Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, having had a chance to review this, and also with things in the world of COVID changing so fast, there's a few things I wanted to throw out. When Joya initially told us in a regional leadership meeting that she was going to be bringing this to the council, I talked to her at that time about the fact that what's proposed in the letter is not things which are actually under our jurisdiction. And therefore, I wasn't sure the, I wasn't sure what, what, what good or what outcome there could be from bringing, bringing this to us when we don't have the same data inputs. I know there's a, a lot of discontent with various rules and regulations as related to COVID out of the state. And certainly, if I take off my council hat for a moment and, and put on my small business owner hat that's been greatly affected, I don't think there is anybody that has been happy or satisfied all of the time. Since this letter was written, in fact, today already, fitness centers were allowed to reopen midday. And paying a lot of close attention as well to the Independent Restaurant Coalition as the body that is largely speaking on behalf of small restaurants, bars, and, and wineries are often associated with that as well, at least in our state. There's a large call for grant dollars, monies to support restaurants as it's become very unclear that just opening at this point would, would actually offer up the support. I don't know what the correct answer there is because, kind of going back to what I initially said, we are not being informed or advised on these things. Again, because they are, they are out of our jurisdiction. I'm, I, my, my, my heart goes out to every small business owner that is suffering and, and there are certainly industries that have been affected far more severely than other industries. And methodologies related to how to respond to COVID-19 have been imperfect at best. So the, the, the content, the intent of the letter of wanting to support our small businesses, I think is, is exactly where our hearts and our minds are. And I think what I would love to perhaps see as a response from the city would be to hear from city staff, maybe not at this moment, but maybe a formalized response from city staff about what we as a, a city have done to support our independent businesses and, and even these specific sectors which have, have been hit much harder. Certainly restaurants have been hit. I don't want to say harder than any other industry because I don't know the ins and outs of every industry. But certainly restaurants have been hit particularly hard by this. And, and I think that that would be a, a really good path forward for us as a city is to rely on our, our staff and, and understand the resources that they have been expending in terms of supporting our local businesses and, and how they have been working with the state and how they have been working with other communities and how they've been working with other organizations. So that, that would be my suggestion of, of how we move forward at, at this time.
Thank you, Remy. Any other comments?
I would agree with Counselor Drapkin. I, I feel like it is not our jurisdiction. And I feel like we have done many, many things to, particularly for the restaurants. But the lodging industry has also been terribly hit by this. There's just a lot of businesses that do need support, but I, I don't know that this is necessarily the way to do it.
I, I can follow up and jump in if I may.
Go ahead, Zach.
And a little bit to Remy's sort of question on what are some threads that, of things that have been done for businesses, whether they're city programs or, or adjacent programs, perhaps in the vein of the chamber, right? We represent all these businesses. I guess first, often foremost, I'm not in port of sending this letter as the council. You know, just recently, we received updates from MDP and MDA chronicling how challenging of a year it was and how those organizations, in a very positive tone, were able to rise to meet the occasion and provide value and services for those businesses. Every business is affected. Every member on this council is either a current business owner or a retired business owner. You know, the, the MDA reported a big win with $89,000, nearly $90,000 of Mac Bucks gift cards, which is 131% more than last year. Part of that was that McMinnville Downtown McMinnville Strong program to support local businesses. They worked with the city in which we, they, you know, took their hands and cut through the red tape to create that dine-out site program, which allowed 22 restaurants, bars and taprooms to expand their footprint onto the street for safe dining, right? That was a great partnership between the city in which we saw a need, cut through it and provided whatever we could for businesses to, to make anything happen. And it's, it's a positive way to say yes to things, right? They figured out how to, MDA figured out how to still have the farmer's market and keep people safe and keep businesses open during that. They figured out a new program, the 12 Weeks of Christmas. They launched a brand-new program that made a lot of those businesses Christmases successful, right? MDP reported that they had 53 participants in their startup, startup boot camp. Let's think about the future of business. Let's think about new businesses that are going to start in this great shift in the market. And so to, you know, that she talks about in her letter, I think, the vacancy rates, right? We're right in line. The MDA is right, right in line with vacancy rates. And in fact, Oregon Main Street, the Oregon Main Street program will tell you that vacancy rates form new businesses. That's how new businesses join the downtown. And we're seeing huge investments in the downtown right now with construction and remodeling and new businesses growing and taking over. It, it, you know, if you want to, I guess, if we want to take up our time on ways that we can collectively stamp something to have a positive impact for not only our businesses, but every citizen in McMinnville, let's talk about getting more money from the state or federal government for businesses. Let's talk about getting more money for citizens and employees. Let's talk about more money to keep people safe in this time, if that's what we're asking them to do. And how can we get more people vaccinated safer and sooner? I mean, to me, those are all positive things we can do that aren't just sort of let us open, open up and put people at risk. So I, I guess those are my, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Counselor Gary. Any, any other comments from counselors?
Yeah, I have, I have a few, Mr. Mayor, if I might. You know, I, I feel like, I agree, it's definitely not within our jurisdiction. However, I would strongly push back on some of the comments that have been made so far. The, the New York Restaurant Association found that only 1.5% of new cases came from, were associated to restaurants. And yet we've targeted restaurants as the ones that are taking the heaviest burden in terms of limitations. That is concerning. And when our primary industry in this area arguably is tourism, we as a city council should be standing up in support and defense of that tourism. Further, if we're interested in bringing money into our businesses, it's much better for us to bring money into our businesses by letting them operate than it is to take it from the taxpayer through the government to get them support if that will bring them the money. So I, I feel like that's not really a, a solid approach or a long-term approach to resolving where our, our, our local businesses are currently struggling and hurting. So I guess I would say to, to all of this, I happen to agree with the underlying point that Counselor Drapkin and Counselor Menke made, that this is not a jurisdiction. This is a, a county and state jurisdiction to begin with. But I don't think the arguments that are being made are, are really sound ones. And I think they ignore some of the real facts on the ground. So, you know, I'm, I'm not willing to, to fight in disagreement on one side, but I just wanted to kind of set the record straight.
Well, if I may respond, and thank you, Counselor Chenoweth. I, I actually think that what you're saying kind of emphasizes part of my point, which is that as a body, we're not receiving information from any source in which we could then kind of try to take over decision-making in this realm. You bring up New York and New York restaurants, at least New York City restaurants are currently operating the same way McMinnville restaurants are operating, which is outside only. And I agree with you that, that there has been no conclusive data that has shown that restaurants are more responsible. There's also lots of reports that say that that follow-through information just doesn't there, that we don't have the data. I am not pointing a finger at restaurants by any means. And we also have to understand where, where we are. And I, I don't know that we can because there's so much information that's available to us and we are all able to seek that independently. So I, I think that we're, we're actually fairly aligned in, in our thinking on that, that, that this is outside of our jurisdiction and that there is a tremendous amount of information there and that we are not privy to the best of it. So I, and I also agree with, with Counselor Gary that I, I don't think the right thing for us to do is to sign this letter to go to the governor. And also because there are many people around this table that have direct relationships with the governor's office. And if we have a need to reach to the governor's office, luckily, we do enough regional work that that's a telephone call, not a letter.
May I, may I make a few comments?
Go ahead, Sal.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Remy. Counselor Drapkin, I didn't, okay. I, I agree with the, the general sense of the board that it would be a bad idea for us to sign this letter. I, I see it as mostly a performative act that would likely undermine our seat at the table with different stakeholders at the legislative level and within the governor's office. I'm also concerned about how this letter came to us. I've reached out to several restaurateurs in town and the ones that I've spoken to don't support this action. They asked me not to take it. And I feel that it's probable, given the timing, that, you know, this is part of an earned media pressure effort that's associated with the lawsuit that the county commissioners and Representative Mike Nierman have filed, filed just a, a day or so before they sent us this letter, before the chamber sent us this letter. And I guess I also just have concern, I guess, as we're getting ready to have another conversation about taking possible action, about aligning with, with Mr. Nierman in light of, of what he was involved in at the state capitol. I'm concerned that, you know, his organization has been traveling around the state trying to get chambers of commerce and city councils to sign on to this type of letter and has filed numerous lawsuits through his organization. Now he has the county signed up on that. And I just don't think that that's the right approach to dealing with a public health crisis and a pandemic. My, my preference would be to try and work collaboratively with the agencies to problem-solve in a collaborative fashion. And I feel that the best things that we've done as a city have been to do that. Like the outdoor dining, for example, I thought was a really creative way to work within the framework. And, and so my encouragement to the chamber. And so, my encouragement to the chamber would be that they should look for places where the law can be tweaked or modified to address some of these exigencies. And I guess the final point I'd make is that, or two other final points. The first is that the letter is somewhat moot because the governor today issued an order allowing for gyms to be open in the two-thirds of counties that they're currently closed in with a limited capacity. So the main thrust of the letter, at least as it relates to gyms, has been somewhat addressed by the state. And then the other point I guess I'd make is just in general with respect to the pandemic. At the beginning of this, the governor basically laid out a strategy that she was going to prioritize protecting human life and working to get schools open and reduce the risk of our hospital system getting overrun. And the main reason I think that they wanted to reduce the impact on our hospital system is that Oregon has the lowest amount of emergency room beds per capita. And so, that, I think, was the main reason why they adopted the plan that they did. And the net effect of the approach that they've taken is that we're forty-sixth out of fifty states in COVID-related deaths. And so I think that their strategy overall is working. It seems to me that they're moving towards schools reopening. And I just think that we need to encourage people to follow the public health guidelines and try and stay the course, even though it's hard, work to get funding for businesses that need it, that are impacted uniquely by these laws, and understanding that it's just temporary. And I just think that that's a better collaborative approach than the one that the chamber's taken. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sal. If I can remind the council, back when the COVID and the pandemic came, the governor met with mayors throughout the state on a weekly basis and took our input. And one of the big discussions that were given from mayors was on small business closures and particularly restaurants. And as a group, we shared our concern with her about the economic vitality of our communities, and she listened very intently. For about a month, we had weekly meetings, and then she came up with her strategy, which she has stuck to that. And so, we have collectively, as mayors, shared our concerns of what closing down would look like as it relates to, you know, the incidences of COVID in our communities. We still find ourselves in the extreme category as it came out today, but things are opening up a little bit. So again, that's kind of where we've been. We've shared our concern. I can tell you, I've shared my concern with the governor one-on-one on the phone. I talked to her about, you know, the innovative dine-out McMinville, and she stopped and she applauded and says, "That's the kind of things that we need to be doing, is doing things in a safe and a secure manner." So she's heard from us, and I think, you know, our one-on-ones as individuals have said, because of committees and our approaches, would be the better way from my perspective. I'll go ahead and open it up for any others that would have comment. Go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, I would share with some other counselors that I just don't really feel that it's in our direct purview, but in the same breath, I also just don't see how fitness centers that we have locally, knowing the firsthand, the approaches they've taken to social distancing, I think, too, our fitness centers are probably, you know, poster childs for the state on what the governor wants to see. And she's also committed us on our outdoor dining, and so, you know, I think that sets us up for the ability. She knows, she knows we have people that buy into systems here locally, and so maybe we could be the leader in this and how fitness centers and restaurants can get reopened. Do I support signing on to this letter and joining a larger thing? No, I would rather us approach the governor as a city of McMinville and a program that we think that's right-sized for McMinville and McMinville businesses and citizens and go at it that way. If that's a phone call or that's a letter, I don't really care one way or the other. But I do think that, you know, almost eleven months into this, it's time for us as a city to, and us as the leaders of the city, to look at a way to move forward for our businesses while maintaining health guidelines and social distancing. And if people can't get on board, then they're not allowed to open. But I personally think that if we're going to wait till we can do outdoor dining again in May, you're going to see a pretty vacant Third Street.
If I may, Mayor? Oh, go ahead. Chris and then Remy.
Yeah, I wanted to first say, Council President Drabkin, if you thought I was saying you were picking out restaurants, that was not my intent. The policy as set forth by the state has picked out restaurants and places where you exercise, fitness centers. And I guess part of my problem in all of this is it seems like the big-box stores and big, large corporations have been chosen to not have to face the penalties or face the protecting everybody. Like, for instance, you know, I can walk into Staples, I can walk into Lowe's, I can walk into all the large corporations we have in McMinville, but I can't walk into a restaurant and sit down and eat. And it just, it concerns me that the general thrust of protection has not been uniform across the board and in a way that makes some rational sense. And as Counselor Garvin has pointed out, well, we're eleven months into this, and I'm, you know, I appreciate that business is leaving, open the door for businesses coming, but I'm concerned about the families that own the businesses that are leaving and what's happening to them and to their children and to their sustenance. So I really like what Counselor Garvin said. I think we do need to do something that's McMinville-sized. We need to do something that, because we represent all constituents, not just some constituents, that will help move this thing forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Remy.
I think I just have a couple of final thoughts on this topic. And the main one, I think, I think that I want to really, that I really want the council to hear, one of my main concerns with this is that we are entertaining agenda items that are not specific to actionable, real actionable items coming out of them. Counselor Chenoweth, I agree, we should be working on policy-level decisions that can benefit our businesses. And in fact, in many of the regional leadership meetings that I go to, there is conversation about suggesting different policy to OSHA, different methodology that could be employed. And that isn't only because it's a concern for McMinville, that's because these state-level decisions are affecting everybody in our state. So, but to kind of bring that back, I am concerned that, I'm concerned with having agenda items that are outside of our purview. And this discussion really kind of highlights that, right? Because there's no, there's no specific consensus we can come to regarding this letter that is going to benefit any business owner in McMinville. You could, we can sit here and go back and forth with a million different items, and ultimately, my concern is that, is that this is, is not appropriate for our agenda.
And with that being said, I think I hear strongly from each member of the council that we will pass on the signing the letter that the chamber has asked us to send. And so I think what I'll do is just, I'll do a simple vote on that. Go ahead.
Mayor, Counselor Peralt had one last statement he'd like to address.
Go ahead, Sal.
Yeah, thanks. I just had a comment and then a point of question related to a point of order for Amanda. The comment is just, I want to make sure that we're putting out accurate public health information in these meetings. And it's been commented a few times that there's really not public health data related to restaurants, and that's just not true. I mean, it is true that Oregon is not doing contact tracing of restaurants, but that has happened in several states, and the CDC basically says, you know, in-person, inside dining is the highest-risk category that they have for, you know, public activities. And I would just encourage counselors who are interested in that to just look up the, you know, just do a Google search with CDC and restaurants, and you'll find a large amount of data on that. The point-of-order question that I have for Amanda is, would it be out of order rather than taking a motion on the item to instead offer a motion to remove that item from the agenda at this point so that we're voting on just taking it off the agenda and not actually voting on the measure?
So you could do a motion on the agenda item, but if the council is not taking any action, you don't actually have to do a motion at all. So you only have to do a motion if there's some action you want taken or if there's like some statement that you want made. So if no one is wanting to make a motion on that, then we'll just move to the next agenda item.
So no one moves and no one seconds, and then we just move on?
Correct.
Thank you, Amanda.
So do I have a motion? Thank you. We will move on to the next item. Good discussion, though. The next item that we have on our agenda this evening is on Wednesday, January fourteenth, I asked to have the city council consider a joint statement regarding the January sixth, two thousand and twenty-one Capitol violence. And we were approached by the News Register to, either as a city or as individuals, to make comment on the violence at the Capitol. And as mayor, I felt that this was our opportunity that we didn't want to pass and not be in the newspaper. And so I worked with Amanda and gave her some thoughts from my perspective, and we put together a statement. And then we did a very quick trying to get a hold of council because we had a date that had to, a time that had to be, to get our response back to the News Register. And it was just physically impossible to get a majority to read the statement and to accept that. And so I'd made a mention to Dora that we would bring this up at the next opportunity to have discussion. And so tonight, what we've got in front of us is, because of time constraints, I put out a statement, not as a city and not as a council, but as an individual, the mayor of McMinville, to address the violence in the Capitol. And so I think before us tonight, I, we, again, this is another item that we, I don't want to spend a lot of time from a city perspective, but I did feel that I needed to get that out of the council. So tonight, it's on the agenda that if the council wants to sign on to that document and have it come from the city, I think we can go through the same process. If there's not a second to do that, then we drop it. Or if you feel, I know a few of you have reached out to your social media and to the News Register article and shared, so I'll just open that up for discussion. I just laid the framework. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I've actually prepared a statement that I'd like to read and to our friends in the News Register that I see are on the call, are on this Zoom meeting. I will put this up in its entirety on my Facebook page, so you don't have to worry about taking notes as I go through this. But I felt like I was asked to wait till now to make any comments, and so I did so out of respect to those who made that request. So let me start by describing how I view our role as city counselors. We're elected nonpartisan officials, and while it's my belief that there's really no such thing, when making public statements on behalf of the council, we should be attempting to avoid the traps of the rhetoric that partisans use to further their quote-unquote "team's" agenda. We cannot become unwitting tools in the hand of either party's agenda. We must do our dead-level best to communicate and address the community with language that does not intentionally or incidentally convey the messaging of a national party. One of those traps is the pushing of us as a body to make a public statement that brings in peripheral issues that have nothing to do with the issue being addressed. The storming of the Capitol Building in Washington, DC on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-one was reprehensible. I've not heard a single person who shares any other view of what happened that day. On that, almost every American agrees, and almost every McMinvillian, to borrow Zach's term, agrees. If our goal is to make a statement as leaders of this community regarding the events of January sixth, we should stay focused on that which we can all agree and on that which is actually the issue of that day. If it was a march for racial equity or the senseless indefensible death of an unarmed black man at the hands of the police that we were commenting on, then addressing racism would have been on point. However, that's not why over two hundred thousand Trump supporters showed up on Washington, DC on January sixth. It had nothing to do with race. It had to do with the election and their belief that it was stolen from them. They did not take over the building to make a racial statement. They did it to make a statement about their feelings about the election. Some in our community would be happy if we drafted a letter in support of investigations into election fraud, while others in our community want us to draft a letter condemning racism and white supremacy. I say we do neither. I understand the desire to make this about racism and about white supremacy. It's been the ongoing objective of some to frame every perceived Trump event as such. And in this case, why not? It's far too easy to do. One of the first images circulated of those in the Capitol was a man, was of a man with a Confederate flag, and we all know the racist implication and revulsion that many Americans feel at that image. It was reprehensible. In another image, there was pictured a short-bearded man standing next to the guy with the horns on his head, the American flag painted across his face, and wearing what some have described as a Chewbacca bikini. That short-bearded man to his side is a member of the Maryland Skinheads. That is an organization of which I can find no common ground, whose underlying principles I detest, and whose members can rightly be described as racists. In a third widely circulated image was one of the most heinous anti-Semitic sweaters I have ever seen. "Camp Auschwitz," it said in boldly, easily readable print, with an image associated with the Nazi regime and wording that was harder to read underneath, but essentially conveyed that the work done at Auschwitz was good work. There are not words in the English language that adequately describe how utterly offensive that is. Arguably, among the list of offensive events and images from that day, that sweater could have topped the list. With that kind of imagery, it's no wonder some want to make this discussion about the participants and not about the content. However, to focus on the identified participants and their inappropriate beliefs does an injustice to many, and that we must be careful to avoid as city counselors. Surely, all of us would be willing to admit that among any group of two hundred thousand people, there will always be some wingnuts. We live in a town of thirty-five thousand-ish, and I guarantee you, we have more than a handful of them here. To make racism and white supremacy a part of our condemnation of this event would be to imply that we believe all those present were racists and white supremacists. That's throwing gasoline on a fire. It's taking a partisan position, and it's something we as city leaders should avoid at all cost. We should be using language that brings people together, not language that brands a whole segment of our society with a scarlet letter, the letter R. We must remember that there are many people in this community that identify with their cause. According to one article I read, forty- with their cause. According to one article I read, 40% of Americans believe this election was stolen. I would wager that if that is accurate, then at least that many believe it here in McMinnville. Let me pause for a minute and say that, for the record, that if 40% of our electorate believes the results are not only invalid, but were fraudulent, that should be troubling to all of us, regardless of party affiliation. By my math, that puts us a well over 100 million people who believe that the man currently occupying the White House did not actually win. Ponder that as you go forward and ask yourself, where do we go from here? I hope I'm wrong, but I worry that things will get worse before they get better. In the meantime, to inappropriately label those present at that event in DC would inadvertently label those 40% who agree with them here in McMinnville with the same scarlet R. Let us not do that to our neighbors, to our family members, and our friends. Let us not make the same mistake that too many leaders throughout our country are already making. Let us not be guilty of throwing gas on the fire. National politics, much as we've said with the state politics that we just discussed, should stay on the national scene. That's how you keep these positions nonpartisan. The irony that we are discussing making a statement about an event at both the state and national level, when our local leaders stayed quiet during the last election cycle here in McMinnville, does not escape me. If ever a statement should have been made, it was then. In conclusion, I would lend my support to issuing a statement from the city council with the help from staff to craft it with the following talking points. Number one, we support the constitutional right to peacefully protest perceived injustices. Number two, we condemn in the strongest possible terms the January 6th, 2021 takeover of the Capitol Building in Washington DC and the threat to our republic that it represented. Number three, we support the LE, including the Capitol Police, who sought to protect it and quickly restored order after it happened. Number four, we mourn the deaths of the Capitol Police involved. And lastly, we are eternally grateful for and offer our sincerest condolences to the families of the fallen officers. Anything beyond that, assuming we do anything, but anything beyond that is throwing gasoline on a national fire that we should be working to put out. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I will. And I don't have a prepared statement for tonight, but I do have to again say that we really did not have partisanship thrust upon the council until the last election cycle, and it hinders us from being able to do our work. Our work is streets, sewers, policy, parks, the potential of municipal broadband, which I brought up in my very first goal-setting session, which Counselor Geary has brought up again. I have no problem denouncing white supremacy. My family had 42 members of it killed in Auschwitz. Forty-two people in my family. Everybody that did not leave was murdered in Auschwitz. I have no problem denouncing white supremacy. I do have a problem having partisan politics continuously brought in here by councilors and by the citizenry. I have, I don't know, I've, I've probably spent four hours a day on this topic over the last two weeks because, because I actually agree with Counselor Chenoweth that it does not have a place here. I do not agree that this is about being a Democrat or a Republican. I do not agree about that we should be spewing facts or viewpoints that cannot be substantiated. I feel like we are backed into a corner here, and it is a terrible place to be. I have no problem denouncing violence at the Capitol. Violence is not the way forward. We have also had a peaceful transfer of power, and our democratic process has shown that it has the ability to succeed. I am not sure what the council wants to do in this moment, but I would ask that, and I do not believe that I am guilty right now of asking of something that I, that I, asking you to do, not do something that I have just done. I do not believe I have made a statement that is either liberal or conservative, that is either Democratic or Republican or independent. I believe I have just spoken a truth that violence is an unacceptable way of moving forward, and, and that white supremacy is an ideology that cannot be permitted at any moment in any time because of the effects of it. And then what I would ask is that we make an attempt to leave partisan politics out of here. We cannot rewrite, we cannot ask our city staff to rewrite some sort of statement. That's not acceptable. That is not in our core services. That is not a good use of our staff time. It is not a good use of our elected officials' time. We are in a terrible position right now. We're in a terrible position. And I have talked to the smartest people I know about how we can potentially address this. And I think it, I think our constituents do deserve to know where we individually as elected officials stand. And I think there is a right way to share that information. We are in a terrible, terrible position right now. And, and for all of the figuring I tried to do for how to get us out of being in a terrible position where we would have these partisan politics come back in by councilors and by citizens, I can't figure our way out of it. So all I can figure to do is to just say to you very openly and very honestly that, that we, we are not serving our citizens well when we, when we are spending our time up here having national debates, and we are not serving our citizens well if we're telling our staff to be, if, I cannot support sending this back to staff for any rewriting. I have no problem denouncing white supremacy. I do not feel as though the mayor's letter in any way painted a scarlet letter on, on anybody other than those who committed violence against, against our democratic process. I can support the mayor's letter. I can speak out against white supremacy. I can denounce violence wherever it appears. And what I can't do is come to a council meeting every other week where we are just being infiltrated with partisan politics. We have work to do for the citizens of McMinnville.
Thank you, Remy. Any other comments?
I'd like to make a comment, if I may, since I haven't had a chance to talk on this.
Sal, Zach was going, and then after Zach, go ahead.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I, I was gonna enter the discussion, but Chris's statement put me in too foul a mood, and I don't know where to grab that. So I will support signing the city's name to the mayor's statement. Otherwise, I put out my own statement.
Sal?
Yeah, I, I also agree with signing on to the mayor's statement. I understand your concern, Remy. I agree with your concern about having to constantly deal with partisan politics in the council. I don't think we had to deal with it the first, you know, two years that I was on the council. It was really last year that, that I started seeing that become more present. And I didn't see anything that named a particular political party in the mayor's letter. Mayor's a Republican. You know, I think that we should be able to take a strong stand as a city council against the use of violence against government institutions, including the state and federal government, in part because the next place that people may decide to come is here. And I don't think we should just allow this kind of conduct to continue. And I agree that we should have an absolute, you know, zero, I personally have a zero tolerance policy on the use of violence or intimidation or anything like that to achieve political ends. But in this case, we're talking about something that is attacking our fundamental civic institutions. And while I don't attribute the conduct of the people who were directly involved to everybody who may believe that their actions were justified, the fact of the matter is, people attempted an insurrection to shut down the federal government. They attempted and were abetted by our state representative to shut down our state government. And there is no reason why people could not do something similar in any city or any county government in the state. And I think that we should absolutely take a stand and say, no, that's not okay here. It's not okay anywhere. And as a city, we're gonna have the back of the side of diversity and inclusion. And that's just where I come down. So I'm, I'm with you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a yes on your letter, and I hope others join in.
Then I move to adopt the mayor's letter on behalf of the city council.
I second.
I'd like to make some more comments to what's been said. You know, the point I'm making, and I hope I made it clear in what I said, I think, I think white supremacy is horrific. I think racism is horrific. In no way, shape, and form am I condoning it. The problem is, when you use wording like about an event in which you had over 200,000 people show up, that really implies that they were all racists, and they were all white supremacists. By extension, that's, we're making a statement that we shouldn't be making as councilors. And I find that the ultimate in irony, that we just argued over whether or not to make a statement on the needs of our business in this community, we argued, we'd never made a statement about what was a horrific election cycle last, last, this, this last year. But we're willing to make a statement about racism at an event in Washington DC. The violence needs to be addressed. I don't, I don't argue with you. That, that, we, we can never condone violence as a way to address political injustice. But if we're gonna claim we're not being partisans, and then turn around and issue a statement that really is partisan in its nature, that seems, it just, it doesn't seem like, it, it just seems inconsistent to me. I, I, I want to end the rhetoric, and this is throwing gas on the fire. I want to, I want to see the division stop. And the way you stop it is you address the actual issues of the behavior as it's happening, not the issues of side that are necessary. I mean, we've got to, we've got to stamp out white, white supremacy bigotry, racism, wherever it shows its ugly head. We can't tolerate it, and not just white supremacy, but any supremacy where one race thinks they're greater than another. We can't tolerate religious bigotry. Bigotry is bigotry. We shouldn't be allowing any of it. Yet we stayed silent on religious bigotry in our own community. I just, to me, this all feels like we shouldn't be here, and it's not a good way. I, I agree with you, Remy. We're being put in a very difficult position. That's why I came out with the statement I did. I felt like I didn't have a choice. I wouldn't have spent time writing that if I didn't feel like I had a choice, and if I had felt like I had a choice in the matter. But I didn't feel like I had a choice. And I don't think that's fair to do to any of us. And I don't think signing on to something like this is a smart move for us as a city. I, I really think what we're doing is we're saying that if somebody wants to handcuff us, we're gonna keep getting these kinds of things because we, not only is it throwing glass on the fire, not only is it branding a whole political spectrum with the scarlet letter R, as has been done for decades now, but it is also opening the door for future people to do the same thing to us, demand of us that we write these kinds of letters. And I, I just, I agree with you, Remy. We shouldn't be doing any of this.
Thank you, Chris. So we're in the midst, we have a motion in front of us and a second. And we've had discussion, and so...
I'll be honest, I, from my point of view, although I have absolutely no problem with the mayor's letter, I frankly, I'm not gonna vote for signing it, so.
Okay. We, we have, we have a motion and a second. And again, as, as Amanda shared with us, if we don't want to move forward, then take, take, take your, your motion back, and we can move forward. But, but we do have a motion on the table. So it's been moved by Remy and seconded by Zach.
I think Adam wants to talk.
Go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, I would just echo a lot of what's already been said, although I do appreciate the letter you put out, Scott. I, I mean, at the very base of it, I just feel that this isn't, isn't in the purview of the council to jump into this national, national issue. And I feel if we're gonna jump into this, then why don't we just pass on a state issue? In the same breath, I definitely am not in support of white supremacy or racism by any stretch of the imagination. And I'll do anything I can in my seat as city councillor to, to remove any of that from our organization or denounce it if I see it locally. I just don't think jumping into state and national politics, you know, I, we could also have the same letter discussion on what went on at the state and what possibly will go on at the state here in the, this legislative cycle right now. I, I just think that it's gonna be a never-ending cycle of, you know, us putting out letters that really are just inciting people to get irritated at the city of McMinnville and come protest in front of city halls. So unless we're trying to incite that behavior and invite it into town, I, I just don't see why we're engaging in it. So like Kelly, I support you putting out the letter, but I don't see the point in signing on to the city.
Okay. At, at this point, just from my perspective, I would, I would, I would suggest we take the motion off the table, because it looks like we're split right now. And I don't want to be that, that, the voice. It was my letter. I've stated my opinion. So, Remy, would you be willing to take the motion off the, the table, and then we'll move on?
Um, I, I will, Mayor. I, I, I'll take the motion off the table. What I want to add is that I do not believe the statement that you wrote was partisan.
Well, and I can tell you that it wasn't in my mind. Again, the perception's out there, but it wasn't in my mind to be partisan at all, because I know that this is a nonpartisan position. But I want unity among this council. And tonight, we've had lots of discussion, and we just cannot allow politics to be coming in and being the piece that divides us. So this might be a good way for us just to move on, but it's up to, it's up to the council.
Well, I've removed the motion. So if nobody else makes another motion, then I believe we can move on.
Okay, so let, let me ask this way. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion at this point?
No, but I would like to say one thing. In case I was misunderstood, I'm saying the verbiage is partisan. I'm not saying that the mayor was being partisan. And I don't, I don't want to throw a barb at the mayor that makes him feel that that's what I'm saying. So I just, I want to be clear on that point, because I don't want to sow seeds of discord among any of us. And, and Counselor Geary, if anything I've said frustrates you and upsets you, I'd love to get together and chat about it, because the last thing I want is to create any sort of tension between any of us.
Okay. So hearing, I'll ask for it one more time. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm frankly really tempted to put it back on, because the fact that we have a, a statement here, that you, you, you're, all of you have just said, I'm happy to unilaterally denounce what's in that letter. And yet, I don't think we should be putting our name on it. Okay, we can talk about the future of going forward with this stuff, whether or not it should come to our agenda. should come to our agenda. We can talk about individual counselors can put out their own thing, but right, right now, we're going to fail to answer the question, do you denounce that? And, and the fact that the City of McMenville can't do that is, 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 I'm gobsmacked. This is really sad. And, and, you know, we're talking about fighting against partisanship. We've, we've already lost. We've already lost tonight. So frankly, I, I, no, I, I, I move. I move that the city approves and signs on to your letter, Mr. Mayor. And I'm, I'm sorry that we can't all let it go down and fail. And those counselors that really can't put their name on it will have to say no. So I'm, I'm making the motion.
Well, I'm not going to leave Zach out there alone, so I'm, I will second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded.
Mayor, I, I might recommend that you ask for a roll, roll call vote just because probably through Zoom, it'll be difficult to tell how, how everyone's voting for, for the record.
Thank you, Amanda. Claudia, could you do a roll call of council?
Counselor Garvin.
Nay.
Counselor Geary.
Aye.
Counselor Minky.
Nay, nay.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Nay.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Aye.
No worries. And Council President Drabkin. And Mayor Hill.
Aye. Thank you.
So this letter passes not unanimously on a vote of four to three. Thank you for your dialogue. Okay, that moves us to advisory and informational items this evening, reports from counselors on committee and board assignments. We'll go ahead and start with Sal, if you'd go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing new to add to my last report from council of governments. Our, our next meetings are coming up. The, the annual meeting is February 13th. I'm sorry, I didn't have my notes in front of me. And we don't have any staff that were recommended this year for the awards. The meeting's going to be held on Zoom. And that is my only meeting report. My other committee assignment for MCM 11 was a conflict, and I haven't had a chance to connect with them yet.
Thank you, Sal.
Sorry, I was not prepared. I mean, I am prepared, but I didn't have my notebook open. Tomorrow, we have a meeting of the McMenville Affordable Housing Task Force. We also had a very, very productive meeting today with members of, Counselor Minky and I had a very productive meeting today with members of our city staff, our local nonprofits, and our federal delegation, and, and our mayor, discussing planning for future federal dollars coming into our community to support housing specifically in terms of maintaining affordable housing inventory stock that the city currently has with some things that we know are coming down the pipeline and wanting to make a forward attempt at maintaining our affordable housing stock. We'll be meeting again in short order. I've been to a lot of meetings since our last meeting. I think if anybody needs information about eligibility in terms of vaccines or where, how to find them, you can email the county, covid@co.yamhill.or.us. Starting today, those in Phase 1B are now eligible for vaccinations in Yamhill County. Those are teachers and childcare providers. And starting February 8th, people over the age of 80 will also be eligible for vaccinations in our county. And any schools or school districts that are also arranging vaccinations can use that same email to organize their, their vaccinations. Counselor Minky gave us great information today with updated stats on the motelling program, and I'm assuming you'll report those here as well, but I look forward to hearing them again. And, and as previously discussed today, fitness centers are allowed to reopen as of today. That's all I have for now.
And if I'm not mistaken, it can, it will allow to have six people per 500 square feet?
That's my understanding. I, I haven't, I haven't read all of it all the way through, but it's, it's the first 500 feet allows for six people unless it's a person-on-person instruction. And then I, I think the 500-foot limitation goes out the window, and then I don't know the multiplier effect off the top of my head, but there is a multiplier effect.
Thank you, Remy.
Remy, can I ask, can I ask a question about Remy? Can I ask a question about Remy?
You can ask your question about Remy.
The COVID email, do you know how they're using that? I, I signed up for it after your last update, and I have heard Naria, Naria Tether. But I'm, I, I am not of value when it comes to vaccines. I'm in the back of the line, so.
There's two different, there's two different emails. There's, you can go to the county website and you can sign up for the newsletter, which is, I'm not sure the frequency that it comes out, but it comes out with updates as things are changing. If you are curious if, say, a family member or a friend or coworker might be eligible and you're not sure, you're not sure how to get them signed up, that would be the time to use the email covid@co.yamhill.or.us. Especially if you believe that you are eligible and you don't know how to go about getting the vaccine, you can send that, send an email to that email address and they will get back to you. There are also a number of telephone numbers on the county website, and those can be called as well. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I think I was.
Counselor Drabkin?
Yes.
I just wanted to interject. The, the 500 square feet rule, it's for facilities that are over 500 square feet, 500 or above, and they can have up to six people. And then under 500 square feet, they're allowed to do one-on-one interactions was my read of the, the order.
Thank you, counselor.
Thank you, Remy. Okay, we'll move to, was that the end of your report?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. Now Zach?
Landscape Review Committee meets tomorrow noon. There's two street tree removals on the docket, MACPAC. Our next meeting is February 4th. The, in addition, February will kick off a flurry of activity for Co-Chair Max Field, myself, as well as staff. We're going to do some service club speaking tour and update the people about the MACPAC, good work we're doing at the MACPAC, to build the ground of knowledge before we start asking for bond, whatever that's going to be. In addition, the pool subcommittee formed, seems to be a big discussion around what is the right aquatic offering for the City of McMenville. And so we, we toured the Newburgh facility and learned a lot. Additionally, I sit on Oregon's Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking Advisory Committee I met yesterday, furthered that discussion along. It's just a real nuanced group with some really cool concepts coming through. The addition in McMenville, I sit on the active transportation concept plan that's looking at that 99 couplet to make pedestrian, you know, non-motorized vehicle transit safe, non-motorized vehicle passage safer. The next meeting for that is February 18th. I encourage you to, all to just look at that information, or I could, I could send that out, or perhaps staff can disseminate that to others if they're interested. But it's, it's interesting, the discussions around that. So that's my update.
Thank you.
Yeah, YCOM didn't meet for the month of January. Airport Commission, we're still moving through, updating, updating the stuff out there. We have a meeting tomorrow night for the rules, so I think we'll make good headway on that. We've been pretty efficient in that process, and Mike's been doing a great job of, of leading that and getting good dialogue from the variety of different airport users out there. And other than that, we've got Fire District stuff coming up. So thanks for the appointment on that, and I look forward to representing you guys well.
Thank you, Adam. Chris?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Hey, a few things to report from visiting McMenville. Just a couple of things coming up. There was a discussion about Willamette Valley Visitor Center strategy of using Uber Media cellphone data. There's going to be an opportunity for all sorts of better and fine tuning of data for, through social media and through cellphone data. So that's very exciting for Visit McMenville. They can get out better information for all of the people in town that they represent. Just some kind of a side interest, Steve Ruff was there, and he was talking about the possibility of a Beverly Clarie statue that they're working on. There was also talk about the art mural for Rosemary Koren. So that, along with the current mural that the City, the Visit McMenville is working on. Switching over to YCAP, I just wanted to briefly go over some numbers that I thought were really impressive. For the first six months of YCAP's year, they have brought in $3.6 million in grant revenue. That's 1.9 million more than they had the prior year. Their personnel, let's see. In addition, what I think you need to realize is they've only increased their personnel costs by 8% this year. So they've done a huge amount more work than they have in the past, and they've had transitioning all sorts of personnel in and out. And they still have only seen an 8% increase in their overall personnel. To Remy's point on the, here, let me find it, on the motelling program, 81, now this is as of December 31st, 2020, but she told us today that the numbers have changed very little since that time. 81 total households were served to date with 141 persons. 73 persons meet the definition of chronic homelessness, homeless for over a year with a disabling condition. 116 adults and 25 children, 46 are seniors, that's over 55. And 54 households have exited the project to date. 100% of the households report a chronic health condition. Locations prior to entry, 81% entered the projects from streets, cars, other places not meant for habitation. 21% entered from a shelter facility. 1.5% entered from a hospital or residential facility. And 5% entered from a jail. The program is expected to run through April. However, there is a city that is working with FEMA to try and bring in more funding that will take them through June, so we'll hope that works out. And that's about all I have to report. I sent all of you this report and some other items. After talking with Alexandria in the future, I need to talk to her before I send things out because Newburgh is supposed to get them the same time we'd get them. So it may not be quite as expansive next month. Enjoy this month.
Thank you, Kelly. Also, Kelly sent out maps as it relates to the Newburgh-Dundee bypass, and I will be available to talk to anyone on the council about those reports in detail. But very quickly, I just want to go over the breadth of those, those detailed reports. The first report will show that the bypass, as it comes into Highway 219, needs to be moved south so that it can connect with the pathway that's going to go over to Rex Hill. And then the, the, the various maps then go into very detail as to the intersections and what's going to be happening going from 219 up to Rex Hill. Now, the bypass will go by an existing housing neighborhood, and so they are now sharing that the, the bypass will be raised above the houses because of the terrain and the noise. As we were going into up Rex Hill, they determined, and they're doing something called value engineering, and that's after they've done all the engineering, they go over one last time to make sure that there's no economies of scale that can be made. And they, through the value engineering, they've made significant changes. And so instead of going up Rex Hill with a large lead-in so that trucks don't lose speed, they're going to be more down towards the hospital, and they'll have an intersection, and then you can go up, and then the trucks will have the ability on 99 to gain speed to go up Rex Hill. The other pieces that we're looking at is Phase 2, which is from 219 to Rex Hill. We have the funding for that. And at least Formul 8, we have the, the funding for that, so we can say that that project is in the process. Rightaway has been, has been purchased. Engineering is in its final stages. And, and so we can, we can successfully say that we know the direction after this value engineering goes to the top echelons of, of ODOT, that we know where we're headed from that perspective. We're having lots of dialogue about Phase 3, which would be from Dayton to Dundee. And we determined that what we'd really like to do is instead of really putting a lot of effort around the fish hook and how to connect to Dundee, to have a straight shot from the roundabout that's on McDougal's Corner, going on to 18 from 99, all the way up. And that gives Dundee the opportunity to, within their city council, determine how they want to connect to the freeway. But we feel like with the infrastructure dollars that we feel are coming, we want to be in a position to get more federal dollars if they become available for phase to the finish, which would be the total, the, the total piece. And so I think that's all I will share with those slides, but feel free to contact me, and I can go over those in detail with you, along with the cost of the interchanges and the project. The only other thing that I have to report is today, we had an opportunity to meet with the Oregon International Air Show. We had the, the, one of the lead pilots from the Thunderbirds come out, and we had technical discussions. The airshow is slated to be on Friday, July 30th, Saturday, July 31st, and August 1st, which is a Sunday. And we're moving forward. We'll know a whole lot more as we get maybe a month and a half down the road, but I just wanted to share that we, we had representations, we had a discussion from that perspective. Okay, I'm going to go across. Amanda, do you have anything from a departmental report?
Thank you, Mayor. It's not so much a departmental report, but I wanted to let the council know that I have been appointed as the co-chair for the Oregon State Bars Pro Bono Committee, which assists in developing and expanding programs. in developing and expanding programs and activities designed to provide access to the justice system and civil matters for Oregonians unable to pay for attorney's services. And so really looking forward to some exciting programs that we're working on in that role. So just wanted to share that with the council.
Thank you and congratulations, Amanda. Let's go over to Heather Richards.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I just wanted to share that we are working on a code to amend our zoning ordinance for childcare. This has been a discussion in the community. We are working with the Planning Commission to find ways to make it a permitted outright use in most of our zones with the appropriate development standards to remove some barriers for people in terms of trying to prop up childcare in McMinnville. And so we'll have that coming to Planning Commission in both February and March if people are interested.
Thank you, Heather.
I have a follow-up question to that, if I may.
Go ahead.
Are you just looking at zoning or will you look at other ways to encourage childcare centers in any capacity, be, be that SDCs or other, or other fees and things, I think?
Currently, we're just looking at zoning. Mike and I have had some brief conversations about SDCs and so I believe we'll be looking at that in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Jenny's next, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Thanks for the opportunity to share with you. I'm hoping that all of you are aware of MAC Reads, which is a community reads program that has been cosponsored by Lynnfield University, Third Street Books and the McMinnville Public Library for at least 12 times in the last 15 years. And last year, if you recall, we brought in Nicholas Kristof. And this year, while we won't be bringing in, bringing in an author, we do have a really exciting program to present to the community. It's going to be over three months and the first month, February, we're going to be actually focusing on a, a series of documentaries, one hour apiece. There's three of them and it's Race: The Power of an Illusion. And that is actually available through a streaming service that you can access using your library card. And then in March, we'll be focusing on Me and White Supremacy by Leila Saad. And then in April, we'll be focusing on The Racial Healing Handbook by Annalise Singh. And this is, and there will be Lynnfield University professors, leading discussion groups and other members of our community leading discussion groups in those three months, focusing particularly on those three, the, the movies and then the two books. And as I said, the movie is available through streaming using a library card. We also have a DVD available for those people that don't have internet access. And then we have 50 copies of each of those books available for checkout at the library. So we're hoping to get a really good number of people in our community reading these books and getting more of an understanding about anti-racism and really excited about it. And thanks very much to Chinny Blackson, who really spurred this whole MAC Reads coming on and of course, Sillimla Clamland from Third Street, Third Street Books as a partner. Thanks.
Thank you.
Could I ask something?
Sure.
Will you be doing announcements beforehand or sending us out a schedule when these events occur?
We'll have, we'll have things posted on social media and our, on our website and we will, the books should be available by the end of this week, along with bookmarks just pointing people to our webpage saying, you know, here's where you can find out the information, basically that is, you know, about when the speakers will be and the discussion groups will be happening. They're planning to be on Monday evenings.
Thank you. Kylie?
Just a couple of little things. I'm not sure if Mayor or Council President Drabkin mentioned the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee progress we've been making. I snuck into my kitchen to get some snacks, so I did it.
I wanted to update us, so go ahead.
Perfect. So we've been having really great interviews with residents of McMinnville for this advisory committee. I think I can speak for the Mayor and Council President Drabkin. We've been blown away with the applicants that we've met with. They've just been fantastic and I think that you guys have a very tough decision to make to, to pick your, your top seven. Those interviews will be done on Friday, Friday afternoon, we're wrapping those up. So at the February 9th council meeting, I believe we'll be able to bring a recommendation forth to the full council, but any applicants who are listening in tonight, we've just been totally floored by how great they've all been. It's been very awesome. Also, the city implemented the bilingual pay incentive policy that happened this week. So now employees who are excellent Spanish speakers and have a job that requires a lot of public contact are eligible for an incentive for that skill. So really excited about that and that was something that was in our strategic plan, so we can check something off of our list. And then as my camera was off, I had a moment of panic because I promised the council some materials from the branding discussion and I forgot to send that, so I will be sending that to the council tomorrow. So I did not forget. I remember just now and you'll be receiving that here tomorrow morning. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, Zach.
Kylie, a follow-up question to the rollout of the DEI committee. I think, you know, the usual process might be the default, the usual process for council appointing those recommendations might be the default process, which works, I think, in the case of one or two, perhaps even three members, especially if those three are interviewing against one other, there's four. How do you see it looking differently in, as you pointed out, you're maybe interviewing 40 people for a committee of 13? And not that I'm out to disagree with the selection process, but that seems, that seems, that seems more daunting to, to wade through. So I don't know if you guys have thought of that rollout?
It is definitely daunting. The, so we do have a criteria as we evaluate these applicants. So we're looking at things like leadership capacity, experience in, whether it's lived experience or just experience in the field of DEI. And then we're also looking to, to bring forth a committee that really reflects the values of our community. So there's a criteria that, that the Mayor and Council President Drabkin are using to evaluate this. It's really, I'm, I'm here to facilitate some things, but it's not my call how, how we do it. So it is definitely challenging to, to whittle it down from, you know, nearly 40 to, to seven. I've seen in other committees, I believe the last one was with the MAC PAC, that there were some alternates that were listed, so I believe we would likely do something like that. You know, and, and we're also really keeping a list of people who just seem like great residents to get involved with other committees as well. So even if we, you know, land on seven, but you know, person number 10 in our list is just awesome, you know, we want to try to find another place for them to engage with the city. So I hope that kind of answers your question. It is tough to narrow it down and I'm not envious of either of them to really make the final call on those recommendations. I think it would be very challenging.
That answers everything with the platform.
Thank you.
Chief Skels?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things from my home tonight. To kind of piggyback on what Kylie said, we will be embarking on our own advisory councils we, or committees we've talked about and to continue to work with Kylie. I know she's got a, like you had heard, a tremendous number of participants or people that want to participate, so we'll continue to sort of develop the process with which we'll open up and I've made it known to our staff that, that advisory council, which will be made up of, or citizenry of diverse cross-sectional artists, citizenry, will be an intricate part of what we do moving forward as a police department and then, so I'm actually super excited with that. I got to work with Amanda a little bit, she doesn't know this yet, but I'm sort of being kicking this can a little bit and I need to get on it. But long and short, so you'll be hearing that as Kylie rolls and the city rolls their DEI committee out. Also, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that long session started, I'm on the OACP Legislative Committee right now and there's probably, it'll be close to 1,600 bills that will be moving forward through, so I, for the next couple of weeks, will be diving into bill after bill. I know there's at least 60 to 70 bills that could affect policing in Oregon, so I'll be knee-deep in that for the next month or so. And lastly, I think you may have all seen on our Facebook page, we were able to swear in Daphne this last week. She's going to be an incredible member of our, of our team. She's from here and we also, last week, we, we were able to welcome back Elijah Creo. He was just on a 10, well, close to 12-month deployment through the Marine Corps, so we've got him back. He's happy to be back and he's getting his, his feet wet back in policing, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I'll go to Chief Lippert.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the, one thing I wanted to touch base on was our interaction with Public Health during this COVID crisis. Most recently, we've partnered with Public Health. We've been a partner with Public Health through our PushPod program that's been a state OHA program in the event of mass pandemics. Unfortunately, OHA changed the rules of the game in the mid-flow this, this last year and required those partners to become providers through a large administrative process. And so we chose not to become a provider for this, this vaccine process because of the, the work required to administer being a provider. But we partnered with Public Health, who is the provider, and today we went out and started assisting Public Health with the first inoculations in Yamal County with some of our medics that were off-duty. So we kind of wanted to share that information. And as we move forward and Public Health starts to expand some of the, the local vaccine sites and as they get more doses in, we'll be partnering more and more with them through those processes.
Thank you, Chief. Let's move down to Scott.
Nothing for the council tonight, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Jennifer.
Nothing this evening for you all, thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer. And Mike?
Nothing at this time, Mayor. We'll have a couple of resolutions for council action here in a bit.
Thank you. That concludes, and then we've got, I can't forget the boss. Claudia, anything for us? She's running over.
Yes, Mayor. I just wanted to state, Councilor Peralta wanted me to let you know that the COG meeting is actually on February 17th and that's going to be from 5:45 PM to 7:30 PM. That's all, Mayor.
And, and Claudia, you've asked for anyone that wants to be a part of that to reach out to you?
I will, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Briefly, a little bit of additional information about our meeting with the Oregon Air Show. Still a lot of decisions to be made. The likelihood at this point, I would guess, is they will be doing a drive-in air show. Most of the air shows that have happened across the country in the last 10 months have been drive-in where the spectators basically park in a large parking spot, maybe put out a couple of chairs and, and sort of do their own thing, limited or no vendors, no static displays, so there's nothing for people to walk around and look at, they're just there to watch the aerobatics. So it's likely that we will see an event that's a lot different than what we saw last time. Only cars parked on the airport site, no traffic across Highway 18 and lower attendance as well. Well, we'll know more as the next coming months kind of roll out. And finally, Chief Skels, simplify to Officer Creo.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, we have three resolutions this evening that are, that we need to address. First resolution is 2021-4, a resolution authorizing the approval of Cooperative Improvement Agreement Number 34513 and Intergovernmental Agreement Number 34613 with the Oregon Department of Transportation relating to the Three Mile Lane Bridge Replacement Project. So Mike will call on you to lead us in a discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet as well as copies of the proposed resolution and both cooperative agreements that the mayor referred to. These cooperative agreements are in conjunction with the ODOT's planned Three Mile Lane Bridge Replacement Project. The council will recall that ODOT has allowed, as part of their project, the city to construct a sanitary sewer force main and for water and light to construct water lines, power lines and comm lines. This resolution before you this evening, the first one relates to the construction portion of the project, how the city will pay for the sanitary sewer force main that will be part of ODOT's bid. And the second cooperative agreement relates to how the city will maintain that sewer line once the construction project has been completed. I would like to note for the record that I'm extremely appreciative to Valerie Greenway and the entire team at ODOT. This project has been a long time in the works and while it's not the first time that ODOT has allowed for municipality in a utility to add work to their project, it is quite rare. And so her team has allowed us to be part of their project. Their bidding is underway and I believe the bid's open later this week. I did note that Valerie was on the line, so if you have questions on the overall project or how the bidding is going, she might be able to answer those. But I did want to thank her and her team for their work allowing us to be part of their project. And unless there are any questions, I would recommend that the city council adopt the resolution as presented.
Okay, questions? I saw Remy and then Zach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mike. I, so I'm not sure if this is the right time to be asking this question, but I do have some concerns specific to downtown McMinnville regarding this project, which I think where there were maybe some ticklings of those concerns early on, but now with the double, triple, quadruple down of COVID and closures and having traffic restricted, my question is, at what point in this process is it appropriate to discuss the timing of construction? Meaning, I saw that the, it's a four-year construction project overall, so with keeping in mind that we wouldn't want to have severely limited access to Third Street over four years, if there's a possibility of having nighttime construction, when would that conversation be appropriate? Does that matter now because would costs be different for contractors if they were operating at night? If that was even a, something that was on the table?
So I'll, I'll give you a brief overview of my understanding from the city standpoint and then, and perhaps Valerie can chime in where, where I get it wrong, but as we've provided, as the project design has moved along, this project's a multi-phase project and the first phase will actually be the construction of a detour bridge. And so traffic will continue to move on the existing bridge until the detour bridge is constructed. And then there'll be a short period of time where they move traffic from the existing bridge to the detour bridge, that there'll be an impact. And then the next phase of the construction will be the removal of the old bridge and the construction of a new bridge in the alignment of the existing bridge. And then the last phase will be the movement of traffic to the new bridge and the removal of the detour structure. So from day one, I've, I and others with the city have conveyed our concerns about how a long-term closure would have a significant impact, not only on downtown, but on public safety, as that's the main route to and from the hospital for a majority of the city. ODOT has listened and they've staged the, the work to minimize those impacts. Now that's not to say that there won't be some impacts. some impacts at time, but their public relations team and their construction team will work very carefully with our public safety folks and, and with downtown to get the notice out on what those impacts will be and when that will occur. And Valerie, if, if I put too much words in your mouth, feel free to correct me.
No. Can you, can everybody hear me? Okay. I've been having some web camera change up. So, yeah, Mike, that's right on. So, Remy, we'd expect probably close to a year before we'd see that shift in traffic. So really minimal impacts during this first year. We'll have a much clearer sense once we get through, the bids open on Thursday. It'll take another month to go through a public comment period and getting into contract with a selected contractor. So by March, April, we should be getting a construction timeline from the contractor, which really becomes, you know, our process going forward. We'll also be meeting, when we have our pre-construction meeting, we'll include members of the city as well for that coordination. And those meetings will continue at least monthly, maybe more frequently. It'll depend on how it's set up. And as Mike said, when we start having those shifts and some of the minor changes going into years two, and then at the end, when we come back in years three to four, and then finally at the end, when we're tying in those construction lines in the roadway, we still expect minimal impacts. We're trying to keep a lane open and, and that type of thing. All those would receive, they'd be on ODOT trip check, and usually that has about a month ahead notice to affected parties.
Yes, I think that's kind of the root of my concern, is that it's not that I don't trust that downtown businesses would be informed if that bridge was going to be closed or closed for a significant period of time. My concern is that, is that the bridge would be closed and that there would be traffic impacts flowing in those directions. And so how, in what ways could we proactively try to mitigate some of those concerns? Because really, I mean, on both of those sides, and, and, and Mike, thank you for bringing up the, the safety side. Also, if an ambulance needed to go through, the, the bridge would clear, right? I mean, that you would, everybody would make, they would, they would allow the ambulance to go through. But even with trip check, et cetera, if there were long delays restricting access to Third Street, that might have a, a much more significant impact on those downtown businesses, which at best are going to be in a recovery period in, in two to three years.
Yeah, I think you're going to see, you know, a natural kind of switch over by the traffic patterns just because of the construction. You know, people may choose to use different routes like 18, you know, because of the length of the project and just to avoid anything. We don't really expect any significant impacts to the actual traffic in that corridor. The, the temporary bridge or detour bridge is wider than the current bridge. I mean, it doesn't have more lanes, but it accommodates the same traffic that's on the current bridge, and will have a sidewalk as well. So, you know, it, I think you'll see that that'll really facilitate fine when the, when that happens. So that's the whole intent of doing it this way. It was part of our value engineering design to maintain that access because of the priority of that corridor and because of emergency access as well. Also, as far as communication, we, I believe we already sent out some notices. We're doing a 2021 construction project. They call it a virtual open house, but basically it's a website. And those go out, I could double-check the numbers, but they go out to all of our OGO contacts in the automatic email blast. So it's several thousand people. We've also coordinated with City of McMinnville in that communication. And then also, once we have the start date, there will be another one coming, probably closer to March. And that's designed to give people that, you know, contacts for all the construction updates. They can, they can add to be contacted directly. They can go to the public website. So those will all be maintained as the project goes forward.
Well, thank you that, for that. I guess I just don't want to lose the opportunity to emphasize enough how severely bridge closures could impact our downtown corridor and in a time when many of our businesses, if not all of them, are extremely vulnerable economically. And, and, and it, and it does not take very much restriction to change people's shopping and spending habits. And we, we are a community that, that loves our downtown dearly. And this project, I'm fully supportive, and I love the project, and I appreciate the methodology of building another bridge and then moving things back over. And I appreciated seeing that. It was the, it was the language in, in the report about the bridge being shut down so that it, at times, would be a single-lane traffic. And then what I specifically thought about was whether or not it would be a possibility when we're looking at contracts to have that part of the construction more or less completed at night so that daytime traffic wouldn't be restricted to our downtown corridor, which will, which undoubtedly will still be in such an extremely vulnerable state.
Yeah.
So I just really want to, I, I want to hammer that point as hard as I can.
We'll have the opportunity, including city participation in that pre-construction meeting when we really get into those details going forward. As you know, that phase really is, you know, quite a ways down the road. So definitely, it's a good point to reiterate and make your liaisons aware, aware of as well.
Thank you, Remy. Zach, did you have a question, or were yours answered?
I did. A question, I think, someone in the vein of, of Remy's sequencing questions, and then Valerie's going to see again. I remember about a year and a half ago, you came into council chambers and gave us this lovely presentation with maps and stood tall and answered whatever questions our public had. And I think I'd love to have that happen again, frankly. You mentioned a start date, you know, whatever world we live in, whether it's the Zoom or in council chambers again, to have the public have the opportunity to, once again, prior to the actual mobilization, run them through, this is the plan, this is the sequence, this is why. Any questions? If you want to stay abreast of the information, here's the website. And then I think up until that, perhaps, Mike, you could keep us informed as you guys move on each of those watershed moments in the critical path. That'd be super helpful. That was really it.
Thank you, Zach. Any other questions? Hearing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2021-04.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It was moved by Zach and seconded by Sal. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying nay. It appears that Resolution Number 2021-04 passes unanimously zero to six. That takes us to Resolution 2021-2, a resolution approving an award of a personal service contract to Jacob, Jacobs Engineering Group Incorporated for an infrastructure-based time extension request. Analysis is required by HB 2001 and OAR 660-046-0300. Heather, could you present to us?
Yes, so this is a resolution approving a contract with Jacobs Engineering, Inc. to do what we call an IBTR analysis. That's an analysis of our existing built neighborhoods and our land to be built upon in the future in terms of our planned infrastructure systems to support them and how they'll be impacted by the middle housing bill, House Bill 2001. By June of 2022, we will, as a city, be required to allow up to four plexes on all single-family residential lots. And there's, that's impactful to our infrastructure system. And so we wanted to be able to do this analysis to, to understand if there were any pinch points. The infrastructure that we're analyzing is transportation, wastewater, water, and storm water. We did receive a grant from the state for $100,000. Originally, it was for $200,000, but the, because of state budget cuts, they reduced it down to $100,000. The total contract award, I worked with the engineering firm to see if I could get that scope of work reduced as well, and now it's at $147,992. We did have funds already in the planning budget to serve as a match for the state grant of $50,000. So we are working within our budgeted allocation for the remaining funds for this contract. We need to have the work done by June of this year to submit, if we do have pinch points in our system and we want to make some improvements to it, we need to submit an application to the state asking for an extension on, be, on when we would allow middle housing in that area that's impacted by the pinch points and how we're going to resolve the infrastructure capacity issues and by what time.
Any questions for Heather from the council?
What do you?
Go ahead, Zach.
What would be their expected turnaround time? I mean, do you hope to have results in how long?
Well, we, we have to have it by June so we can submit an application to the state. We're, right now, the, the schedule's actually in the contract that you have as part of your packet. We're hoping to have all the analysis done by the end of May, so we understand where the pinch points are. And then if we need to make an application, they will put the application together and we'll submit it to the state. It needs to be in the state by June 30.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-2. So moved.
Second.
Sal gave us a motion, and Adam gave us a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Here's that Resolution 2021-2 passes unanimously six to zero. Our last resolution this evening is Resolution 2021-5, a resolution authorizing the approval of a cooperative fund exchange agreement between the City of McMinnville and the Oregon Department of Transportation, ODOT, known as the Fund Exchange Program, and Agreement Number 34653. Mike, can you run us through this?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. And once again, I'll refer you to the staff report that's in your packet, as well as the proposed resolution and a copy of Agreement Number 34653. And for those that want the historical context, there's a copy of our Oregon Transportation Infrastructure Bank loan document or agreement that we executed in 2013. So once we executed that loan agreement to cover the city's share of the first phase of the Newburg Dundee bypass project, we've been responsible for annual payments of $201,248. We're able to use our federal funds and exchange them with state funds to cover that payment of principal and interest. It's unique in the fund exchange agreement is that we're allowed to exchange on a dollar-per-dollar basis. Most fund exchange agreements for federal dollars to state dollars are currently at 94 cents on the dollar, and that is changing, I believe, to 90 cents on the dollar this calendar year. So this is the fourth or fifth time we've executed a fund exchange agreement for this loan payment. And unless there are any questions, I'd ask that the council approve the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for council, from council to Mike?
I see that's Mark.
Seeing none, I will, I will call for a motion to approve Resolution 2021-5.
So moved.
Second? Second. It's been moved by Kelly, seconded by Sal. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Resolution 2021-5 appears to pass unanimously six to zero. Any other information that needs to come before the council this evening? I adjourn the city council at 9:44. Thanks all, and be safe out there with the snow on the ground.